United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first off, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Is there any comments on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is presented.
I'll make a motion to, well before I do that, was there anything to be said about the consent agenda now? This is how you do the agenda, so.
Oh, would you like to do the consent? We can do the consent now if you'd like.
Well, just maybe this way, you were there, it's been off a day. Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
All right, there's been a motion in a second. Seeing no discussion, moving to vote, all those in favor of approval of the agenda for the regular meeting on February 7, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstentions, the agenda passes. We will now move to the approval of the minutes, which I'd like to thank Julie for that. It was a lovely four-hour meeting and probably took a while, so are there any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 17, 2019.
There's a second.
I second.
There's been a motion in a second, is there any comments? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular meeting of January 17, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstentions, minutes are approved. The first was Councilmember Kaisler, seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. We will now move into number six, the presentation for tonight, which is the mid-year budget review, so Blake, I'm assuming you're gonna take us on a wonderful, wonderful ride.
Wow, thank you for that, that's amazing, appreciate that, Mayor Lukey. Yes, so, we've worked on the mid-year review. You have your packet there, these slides on your hands, we will go over that. But first, I just want to give a quick Finance Department update. So you all know that, of course, Karen was here for roughly, just about two years. She recently retired due to health conditions. And so, we went out to post the job, it was a competitive process, and we hired somebody. That's Manya, she's been now here for going on almost two months now, not even quite two months. And I just wanted to report, she's doing great, head to ground running, super smart, super intelligent. We are very fortunate to have her. And she's already done amazing things and is looking for ways to save money. So, we're just very, Mark and I are both very pleased, I know Julie's too. Say that as well.
She makes it for a less than two hours.
Yes, you always gotta smile.
Manya?
Manya.
And she sits next to Tanya.
That's right.
And they sit by Julie, so there's her seat.
That's exactly right, you're leading her right into the place where I was gonna go. So myself, Tanya, and Manya, we are the 2.6 Finance Department and we are finding our stride and we're doing, we're doing good, I think.
We're doing great.
Thank you, thank you. All right, on that note, so, you have a packet of slides that you'll see up there. You also have this revenue expenditure report, so I just wanted to go over that real quick. And for everybody listening outside, the government accounting is fund accounting. Okay, so it's all these different funds that are separate entities, basically. So, on a full account, it's made up of the first two digits is the fund. The next three digits is a department. The final six digits are the account number itself. And that whole string of numbers makes up the full account. So, on your revenue expenditure report, you'll see at the very top, there's Fund 10, that's the general fund. Then if you go down a little further, it'll say department. And there are multiple different departments throughout, this is on the revenue expenditure report, not on the slides.
Do we have another one, Lee? Julie?
You can have Mark's.
You didn't give him one.
Give him one on mine.
There you go.
Thought I did, apologies, Councilmember Bryan. So, on the revenue expenditure report, I'm just going through that real quick. So you'll see, so general, so you have fund, then departments, and departments are mainly in the general fund. We got things like city council, finance, fire, police, so forth. Then you'll see the very first six-digit number on your revenue expenditure report is 4100.00. So 4100, so that's the revenue account for property taxes. Seeing no questions?
The one that says secured, unsecured taxes?
That's right. So that is our property tax revenue account. So I would say 10, 000, 4100.
And just for clarification, so that we're all, you know, on the same page. So you have your original budget, amended budget, and that's for the anticipated full financial calendar year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year. And then the actual, right here, the 177, 971, that's basically what we've left it up to for the year. So, would you say we're on track?
I could not have said it any better myself.
Okay.
The, just to point out as well, that far right column, at the very top, says percent V U D, percent budget. So that will show that according to that column, Fund 10, Department 000, account 4100, is showing 58.9. So that means we are 58.9% of our projected budget. So, simple terms, if it's around 50, because this is the mid-year, so July 1 to December 31st, that's six months, that's half a year, that's the mid-year. If you look down those columns, and it's a number that's not 50, then that's something that we would look at. If it's a revenue and it's above 50, then that's kind of a positive, in a way. And then if it's in the expenditure category and it is above 50, then that's something to look at as well.
Is that simple?
So, that's it. So Bruce, this at your leisure, and I'll be happy to talk about it whenever you'd like.
If I could, I guess the biggest question is, what do we see generally in terms of the hit we took from the fires last year? I think that's what we're all kind of holding our breath to find out.
Bruce, I cannot thank you enough for that segue, that will lead us into the presentation, which we will. So now, into the presentation, which is in the slide packet. Okay, we're just gonna bust through it. I think that'll wind up done. All right, so, general fund. We're gonna continue on to general fund revenue. So, the left column there is our original budget. And this is, of course, not the full original budget, but just some things that I wanted to point out. So we have building rentals. The original budget, it shows there is a $93,000 amount. We amended that downward to $34,000. And that's for the bottling facility. So, we had to amend that revenue down, building rentals. Now, part of that is, we were talking a little bit about a difference between 1718 fiscal year and 1819 fiscal year. And the cash received was in 1819, but we posted that in 1718. So I just wanted to make a note, nothing big there, just make a note about that.
So a question on that, so what you're saying is, is that the loss that we occurred in 1718, or in fiscal year 2018, because of the revenue that we didn't get in from the previous renter of the property, that was all put into that year, which left us with a little bit of a hole going into this year, is that right?
No, it's not quite as simple as that, it's a little more convoluted. Part of this has to do with accrual versus cash basis accounting. And we had the accrual, we were giving them, we were posting accounts receivable for the bottling facility. So that was on our balance sheet or statement of net position. But in the statement of net position, you have an asset of accounts receivable and cash. So our cash would have been a lot less and our accounts receivable would have been more. But in essence, we got the cash in, so that posted favorably to us in terms of our cash flow. And so, but we had to revise this downward for the current company that came in, and that was contracted. So a little hard to answer the question exactly, but we've got the idea, thanks Bruce. Getting further down, so the $125,000 cost grant revenue, we revised that up to $148,000. Okay, so then the last bullet point there, the projected decrease, so this is kind of what Bruce you're alluding to. What we did, and what fires can affect, is T O T, which is transient occupancy tax. T U T, transactions and use tax. And then sales tax, which is Bradley burn, sales tax. And we can get into all that if you ever have questions about it. So the fires can affect those in ways where people are, one, not buying things in Dunsmere, and not staying in Dunsmere. So if you're not staying in Dunsmere, that affects the T O T. If you're not buying things, that affects T U T, and the Bradley burn's sales tax. So, what we did, various, there's a big analysis that we can do in shifting things back and forth, but the very basic analysis that we did was looking at last year, same exact timeframe, and this year, same exact timeframe. And if you do that, just direct analysis, it's about a 17% decrease that we saw. So, that hurts a little bit. So what we projected, the original budget is $400,000, that we projected for T U T, T O T, and sales tax. So if you just take $400,000, multiply it by 17%, and then subtract that out, the new projected amount is at $332,000. So that's a decrease of $68,000. So on that right-hand column, you can see our original general fund, it's about 1.48. Then you subtract and add and subtract, and you come down to the 1.38 number. So it's a full decrease of about $102,000. Which 102 of 1.3 million is a good percentage.
Can we take a few pennies?
Can we take a few pennies, Bruce? So, we will continue on with that. Kind of have the 102 number in your mind. Okay, so now the other side of this equation is the expenditures. We're looking at the left-hand column, we titled "Help to Offset Our Revenue Shortfall", so things we've kind of done to mitigate a big deficit spend. So one of those is hold on hiring code enforcement. Another one is this program income, which gets a little convoluted, but it can help in certain revenues. There is also a dividend, we got a dividend from our SCORE, which SCORE is a small cities organized risk effort. It's basically our self-insured insurance program. So we get a dividend back from them, but we also have had an assessment in the past. So, that total assessment was around $40,000 that we owed to SCORE, but we got a dividend back from them of around $20,000. So that is a $20,000 savings, that's great. And the last bullet point there, commercial water sales, that is the commercial bottling facility. The water sales have gone into the general fund.
Would you explain that to the public, please, about what that means? Because water is so important, I think people should understand that.
Yeah, sure, yeah. The water bottling facility has two meters, one is a domestic meter and one is a production line meter. So the production line meter is a sale through contract. It is not subject to 218, it is through the contract, and that sale of that water goes into the general fund. Now, the other meter, which is domestic, which has the faucets, drinking water, the sewer, those are all domestic apartments. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so those are kind of some things that help offset the revenue shortfall. Now, that's on the one hand, on the other hand, and my economics professors always used to say the joke of, you always want to cut off one economist's arm, so that they can never say "on the other hand". But you have, on the other hand, the additional expenditures that we're not quite budgeted for. So we have building repairs that are part of the contract out at the bottling facility. So that is something that we have to account for. We just heard about, currently, there's some potential cleanup, toxic materials at the Public Works Facilities. Bill has given us some estimates of what he thinks it might be. So we're working on that. It's basically paint.
Oh, it's paint, okay.
Basically paint, yeah.
I was trying to ask this part, you know, because that's gonna, that would be.
Yeah, apparently it's paint that I think has been there a while.
Okay, it's a lot better.
I thought you had a word.
I know, I, well, the first thing that I was, in my brain, was a super fun site, which should see the Bruce, but I kind of wouldn't admit that we have one of those up here, but yeah, brownfields, it's not.
I had, I had to get down to the facility, but I would imagine it is super fun.
Yeah. Not really easy, don't do that.
Okay.
That's a bad word in the art.
Well, what are you counting on?
I do have a question really quick about revenue. Have you looked at projections for the cannabis local tax?
We have not.
So you don't know what might be able to supplement with that?
No, I haven't done any major analysis at all on anything. Yeah, I'd love to hear, talk to my counterparts, North, and find out.
We just pulled our first month's number, so we can talk about that later.
Beautiful, fantastic, it'll be great. Okay, continuing on with the expenditures, an airport fund deficit.
On that point, why not?
Why not, have we not looked at the cannabis revenues?
Yeah, and projected to dig to.
One, I am not.
This year's budget and next year's budget.
Yeah. We looked at, in the basic sense, of the revenue projections during the tax measure initiative. And I think the number released back then was about $20,000. But there are so many uses that are being allowed in the city of Dunsmere, we allow more uses than most other agencies. So, we're not quite sure how many of those uses will actually be applied for and what we're gonna receive from that. But, we do know that the, we're gonna look at, immediately look for applications for the retail side of things and then the cultivation side. So, as soon as we get those applications in, we'll probably see what other neighboring agencies do as well. But coming up to this point, we just haven't had anything to really look at. There's so many uses that we allow, we don't really have a threshold to allow.
But we know it's not zero.
Yeah, that's correct.
We had a lengthy discussion where before Julianne was mayor, she came and participated. And it was a fight to raise it from 20,000 to 40,000.
Microphone.
20,000 to 40,000. And it just seems ignorant to me not to reject this as a revenue source, just like the bottling plant.
It can be difficult, I think, I think the problem comes into, we don't want to bank on getting a certain amount when you really have too many unknowns. For example, for the case, for the tax measure, you have to put a number. We did the same thing up north in Mount Shasta, and we literally just pulled a random number. Because, at least for this area, we really don't know what we're gonna be pulling for cultivation tax specifically. And then retail, you can kind of get a general idea, but I know that Dunsmere's primarily medical-based retail, which medical-based retail is exempt from local excise tax. So, it's difficult to project, you know, how much adult use is going to come down to here, how much cultivation could occur down here, manufacturing and the like. I, you know, I think we can logically take a look at what's happening up north and project a number off of that. But again, we've only got one month, we just received one month's worth from our retailers. And that's really all we can project as far as cultivation, for projection of what Mount Shasta's doing. They report on a quarterly basis. So, once April rolls around, and I think it's the same thing for the city of Dunsmere, April would be a much safer month to say, this is how much we're projecting based on this supply market, based on what's being demanded by the state markets themselves, not the state government, but, you know, other places like Sacramento and San Francisco. But, you know, I think it's safe to say you'll get at least 20. I mean, basically, the numbers that we're seeing from our retailers alone can match that, but.
The combination of cultivation and retailing is a number bigger than zero.
Correct, yeah. And I think, I think once April runs around, it'll be nice to at least maybe come back to us and have an estimation on what that'll look like.
Well, I'd like to also note that we have a second reading today. So if that goes through clear, then we have a 30-day waiting period. So, applications are, we're expecting applications in late March possibly. So, most of the revenue we're gonna be, expect them to get in would be at the tail end of this fiscal year, early into next.
Yeah.
At the time, the last significant energy was put towards projections, but cannabis tax hadn't even passed yet. So, you're going into our budget, you know, in the fiscal year 2019, '20. Projections are very meaningful there because it'll be in place, but.
If the cannabis tax passed in November, 70% square foot for this community.
Yeah, and there's obviously very thorough research about the future revenue as we can expect. And we should have a great deal of energy projecting and I think all things in the next year. This year, there's still a little time within place.
No, I disagree with the schedule.
Okay, well, one, it'd be difficult to know how much we could predict or not, that's what we're talking about. But two, we don't know what length of time this year we would really cover. And I think we begin to operate.
Yeah, and so, from Mount Shasta, what Muriel has done in the finance sector, we even talked about it earlier this week, she's only projecting $15,000 revenue for this fiscal year. That'll probably be lowballing it, but we would rather lowball it than assume that we're gonna get $50,000 and can't spend that, and then put ourselves into a weak deficit.
Isn't that three retail shops too?
Three retail, it's nine total licensed facilities, seven are operating at some capacity, three of those are retail. And other variety of things. And it's not, you can't necessarily compare it apples to apples because the licensing works differently in both jurisdictions, and our taxation is different in both jurisdictions. So, one of the things that's done down in Shasta Lake, city of Mount Shasta, and then there's a local tax discussion going up in Torus about doing the per-square-foot tax, which is, you know what that is. People typically don't change their per-square-foot from year to year for space, so you can easily project that out. So we have an estimation on that, which is $32,000 in Mount Shasta, and I think Shasta Lake is about $68,000. But that's a dollar per square foot. My understanding is Dunsmere did not do that, so we can't just say, it's gonna be this every year, we know we're gonna get that. So it's how people end up doing the tax and how people end up doing their licensing does have an impact on what you're collecting, how you're collecting. And again, then, once you get into the adult medicinal retail, you can't tax the medicinal side. So you can't necessarily guarantee, you know, just because a dispensary in Shasta Lake has a 50/50 mix of adult medical users, you can't assume that same 50/50 mix of the dispensary here in town. Because you could have medical patients, you could have more adult use. So there's a lot of unknowns to it. Just to be fair, I mean, like I said, our projection for the Mount Shasta budget at my job is only $15,000 for this year because we would rather not bank on that revenue yet. So I think it's safe.
But for this city, it's zero.
I don't think it's zero, but I think right now it's too difficult with the unknown to give an estimate.
Well, not that the budget says zero.
Correct, yes, great discussions all around.
Sorry.
No, I think it's.
We add a little in the weeds there.
Fantastic discussions, and yes, like I said, there's two sides to, two arms, and so, yes, for some great revenues, great point, Peter, but there are some expenditures as well with that, which leads to that final bullet point there. We're already seeing some expenditures regarding cannabis and implementation of it, so.
Are you gonna talk about those?
Not in, not in detail.
Well, it's curious to me.
So we've seen some expenditures already from John Kennedy's fees.
Putting together ordinances, writing the tax measure.
But yeah, do we have a fee schedule so the applicants can reimburse the city? Do we have all of that in place?
That'll be, that'll be put in place once we approve the zoning. Has to come through, I believe, as a resolution.
But the notion is, you're looking at it as a general fund expenditure unreimbursed, and that's not correct.
Well, until the resolutions pass, Peter, it is currently correct.
Well.
We don't have a fee schedule yet, we'll get to it once the zoning's there. But until we move to have some sort of fee schedule, you couldn't even, you know, get some idea what we might do, but it's up to the city council to determine.
Well, this, I mean, to me, this is the wasted year of 2018, but that's another topic, or later.
Yep, so back on to the budget, then, the major budget. So note on a few, some future expenditures, we do have a purse unfunded liability, which keeps creeping in the upward direction. And then the other note on street sweeping, tree trimming, is that we'll be out of the solid waste fund. So it's a discussion that needs to happen on potential future expenditure within general fund. Okay, so that kind of leads to general fund balance. So if we're currently projecting deficit spending of roughly $75,000, so that's in relation to the very first slide, or toward the first slide, of that $105,000 revenue shortfall. So there are, you know, measures to help offset, there are other expenditures. So, we are just projecting that deficit spending will be $75,000. So, the second bullet point is just a note. So there is a general fund due from, due to, that the auditor pointed out in his report. So, the total is $92,000. So that's if the general fund is going to cover these costs, then this is what would happen, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. That number is $71,000 for the airport, and then $20,000 for gas taxes. Gas taxes are separate funds, but they kind of correlate to the general fund. It's like, if you get $20,000 of the gas tax, you don't have to put that in the general fund. But then if you overspend in gas taxes, you have to put that back in the gas tax fund, and it's gotta come from the general fund. So they're closely related in that regard, yes, Peter?
Well, I mean, just so I get the point, you're saying that, as the auditor pointed out, the airport fund is in deficit mode? And we're looking at transferring $71,440 from the general fund to the airport fund?
No, we're not looking at that. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that.
What does bullet two mean?
It's just that it's basically a note saying that the airport fund is in deficit, $71,000.
Yes.
But we're not saying that the general fund is covering that.
Well, what does cover it?
Potentially the future airport operations.
And if that doesn't happen?
General fund.
Thank you.
Yep. So, general fund, total expenditures are around $1.4 million. So if we look at reserve amounts for that general fund, we're looking at 20 and 25%. Can you see the numbers there? So if we are, the current fund balance as of 6/30/18 is $380,000. And if we're looking at a projected fund balance then, and I'm just subtracting $100,000 off of that to get to a projected fund balance of $280,000. So that $100,000, which basically comes from $75,000 of a deficit spend, plus maybe some $20,000 in the gas tax coverage, then I just rounded up $5,000 to make it $100,000 to a projected fund balance of $280,000. So then we move on, talk about the solid waste. So, solid waste is deficit spending, it has been for some time. Current projected for this fiscal year is $132,000. And so with major budget review, that's looking like what is gonna happen. So, the next bullet point, right, we have total expenditures of $393,000. And we're looking at, we're trying to look at having reserve balances in all of our funds. So if we want a 20% reserve on expenditures, that covers a month, a couple of months of expenditures, should they need arise. So that amount will be about $78,000. So fund balance currently at 6/30/18 is $212,127. So if you take that $212 and subtract out what the deficit spend would be, you get about $80,000 left at the end of this year. So, then, what is being done, question mark? So we do have the solid waste study, the rate study pace has been doing their due diligence in figuring out some good options for us.
In progress.
In progress, yeah. Moving on, airport, so as Peter was kind of mentioning, net position of the airport right now, the net position is negative $121,000. So that's the net position. But you're looking at capital assets of $2 million. So the airport does have assets. It's got value, it has assets of $2 million, it's over $2 million. But the total net is $1.9 million. So that's where we get this deficit of $121,000. Now of that, so deficit spending is projected at around $10,000. It was at about $17,000, but we did have some revenues from the fires. They closed the airport down, had a bunch of helicopters in there. It was actually really neat to see all the helicopters. And we got $500 for that, so that brings the deficit spend down to about $10,000, so we're projecting. So that'll. So, that'll increase the due to the general fund from that 71,000 that I mentioned before to about 81,000. And then that will actuate, the fire revenue is $500. So, what is being done? We do have some grant funding to offset consultant costs and some of our staff salaries. Certain council members are working toward an industrial park development. And then in the future, this deficit spending will no longer occur. So, the plan is to reduce services to match the revenue. So, whatever revenues come in, that's all that's going to get spent out there. So, if Bill and the guys have to go up there and there's no money, then they're not going up there. And that includes, there is a loan amount out there, so that includes repayment of that loan. Yeah, it's council number eight.
What is the projected date for that? When we stop spending for the airport?
It'll be 7/18, 7/19. So, in the next budget cycle, that will not happen.
Unless council allows it.
Yeah.
That's what we're balancing.
Basically, they're saying come next fiscal year, we'll follow that up.
This is the very next budget. I don't think we can project a break even next year, that's the point. The point is we're still in development phase. And we're recovering in four years, having nothing done with the airport, not even the asset a third way. So, we're looking at responsibly developing this property out there within a given timeframe. And if that doesn't happen, or do it within a year, if that's what is going to happen, we can reevaluate it to try and turn something away right now. And we're talking to developers about the opportunity of having an airport next to a big property there where you can build a bunch of warehouses. That's a sad situation in terms of the budget, but it's about economy change or drop the course around right now.
Well, again, there hasn't been any formal action from council and I think that's going to be a recommendation from the airport committee or council to consider. I think as it sits right now, there is no defined action approved by council, so staff is going on their recommendation at this point to go to the new services to match revenue next fiscal year. So, that'll probably be an action item for us in the future to discuss and vote on how we would like to deal with this because this is obviously a glaring issue. But really quick, loan payments. You had mentioned we're paying off a loan right now. Do you have projected the off date for that loan?
I'm going to go with like 10 years from now.
And then, by the way, just a point on the other, that you are on the committee, so that's a good way for us to work together to get to that goal.
Yeah, we will definitely have to address this. And then, one thing to also understand about airports and FAA grant dollars is they do typically have a 25-year requirement that we will have to keep it open and operating for 25 years. So, we have to look at previous grant dollars that have been spent there, this current grant, you know, what that would mean for us to, as far as walking away from it. That's going to be a little bit more complicated than just we were going to walk away. So, it'll, it'll be a future action item to discuss and to add formal action on on what our strategy is going to be, and that'll happen prior to the next fiscal year.
What's the?
Wastewater?
Wastewater, sewer. Okay, so we have wastewater is also definitely spent and in deficit for quite some time as well. It is at projected 169,000 deficit spending. This is from Fund 20. So, there's a little bit of a note here, there is Fund 20 and Fund 21. So, there's the sewer fund, Fund 20, sewer improvement fund, Fund 21. Okay. But Fund 20 is deficit spending right now, $169,000. The total expenditures for wastewater is about 727,000. So, if we're looking at a 25% reserve on that, we're looking at 181,000. The fund balance, and here's where a note comes in as well. The fund balance currently is 172,000. Now, these are audited numbers, so six, as of 6/18, Sewer Enterprise has a fund balance of 170,000. That combines both funds together. So, that's both Fund 20 and 21 together. So, you kind of think Fund 20 is over spending, Fund 21 is not. So, both combined together, the fund balance is 172,000. So, projected fund balance, we're just projecting it to be about the same. It actually potentially can be very, very close. So, what is being done? Again, also, we have the wastewater rate study being worked on, so PACE is coming up with their plan. I do want to make another note too. We did have some aerator shaft totally split or something, I forget what Dennis said. It's definitely totally broke. So, that's an expenditure that was not planned. Then we also have, PACE is our current grade three operator. They are not wanted any longer, so we have to hire somebody. But it's a lessening of the contract with PACE and an increase of a salary.
Do you know that, what that's going to look like?
No, it's, it should, it's in the rate studies, so I think PACE has done a good analysis.
Okay.
Other funds. So, the Water Enterprise is great, it's doing, it's doing right on track, it's healthy. But there are some potential budget amendments that are going to come through for the water main break up there on Shasta.
Shasta?
Yep. But the Great Lakes Water Fund does have the ability to provide some of those things. So, it's, it's a healthy fund in that regard. So, that's a positive. So, the gas taxes, like I kind of mentioned, we are going to match those expenditures of revenues in the future. So, we shouldn't have that $20,000 due to, due from needing to cover it in the general fund. But again, if you have, you want to max out your gas taxes. You want to put as much as you can in there because it alleviates the general fund. But if you do over spend in the gas taxes, it's basically general fund money. Summary, almost there, everybody. So, general fund, we have inflationary pressures. Now, regarding sewer fund, water fund, things like that. Inflationary pressures along with the Calperts unfunded liability requires additional revenue measures for lots of services. Solid waste and wastewater. We are doing rate studies right now to help address the issues that are the deficit spending and we're trying to make recommendations for that. Airport, looking to approve infrastructure. There's a potential full 100% grant out there that we've all heard about. Looking at developing an industrial park. And the general fund holding of airport debt expected to be paid in near future. So, that 71,000, 81,000, we're looking at the airport paying that back.
Are there any other questions for Blake right now on the major budget review?
Good job, though.
Maybe you're still reading some?
Here are the questions.
Yes.
Okay.
If we go to the general fund revenues, and this is sort of a warm-up to the article in newspapers about a community pool possibly closing. Where is the revenues for the special sales tax that the citizens agreed to pass to fund the library and the pool?
Okay, for this budget year, the Parks and Rec had been paid the amount that was approved in the budget. There was two payments that were made, one early in the year, and then we made a second payment, I believe, in December to Parks and Rec.
Is it, is it broken out as a 4100 coded revenue source or not?
So, what's the exact revenue source you're looking for?
The special sales tax increment.
So, the T.
The community book it for.
So, the, the general.
Library and the pool.
The half thing. General tax, transactions and use tax.
Yes.
That's the T U T.
So, 41.
So, that's 4125.
So, all of that is a result of that tax?
Correct.
Half poll.
So, we're at mid-year, so if you go to the, the actual there, the 52,350, or, yeah, that's basically what's been collected so far is revenue?
Yeah, I'm looking for the 95.
No, the 43.
The 95 is the budget, not projected.
Yes, yeah, thank you, sorry, it's on T O T.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so the T U T, so it was budget 95,000. But again, our, our very first note is that if we look at same time last year, same time this year, there's that decrease that could potentially have happened because of not, people not purchasing things here. So, please follow your stuff here and down there.
Any other questions? Any others? All right, thank you. All right, so we have no other scheduled presentations for tonight. And just to remember, the general, reminding the general public, we, if you have any questions or comments about this presentation, we will take those on number eight in the general public comments. Presentations are typically not actionable items, and so people do not have their own public comment section. If we do want to set this as an action item, we would have to do that for future meetings. So, we'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports that anyone would like to present on?
Airport is still waiting to hear back from the FAA, but everything we hear every time we hear is okay.
Okay, yeah, there was a little bit of a furlough for federal employees, so they're a little backed up right now. As far as committee reports, I did meet with Chief Padilla about disaster planning and advisory and discussing different strategies from before with our preparedness. We had a nice little discussion about nuisance ordinances and taking a review of our current, our current ordinances to make sure those are ready to go so that people are cleaning up their yards prior to that year. But there was no action or recommendation from that committee to this, this body yet. So, that was pretty much just what happened with the disaster planning. And that has openings, if anyone would like to front for it. It's open to the general public.
I do have a couple more, but good. First of all, Neighborhood Watch, we're making a big effort to start the Neighborhood Watch up this year. And so, what we've done is council member Kaiser has worked out that on the 20th of the month at the community building, we're going to have a get together, a potluck for the Neighborhood Watch. The idea here is that a couple of months ago, we identified a map that broke out the area into smaller, more manageable groups for neighborhood blocks. And so, we'll be working off of that. And former council member Spurlock has agreed to put together a place on the website that will allow people to sign up. But what we're hoping for on the 20th is to get anybody that really would just like to be part of helping make this a safer place and learning how Neighborhood Watch programs work in other cities and how we're going to try and model that on how we come together. Just come on down at 6 o'clock on the 20th, which is a Wednesday, right? And bring your neighbors. And I know that Paris Petrick has put a lot of energy into trying to get people there. She's helped to put this together, and so I hope that everyone comes to that. The other thing is, is that we're working on getting together an economic development meeting. What we're waiting for, Richard Dinges, working with the chamber, has been reaching out to possible developers and possible people to come in and help us do the engineering on the industrial park. He's getting some interesting feedbacks. What we're waiting right now is to find somebody that would be willing to come up here and engage us in a discussion at the Economic Development Committee about how this might come together. But again, what we're looking at, 78 acres to the east of the airport that we realize now is available for us to lease out or sell. And the idea is that we're looking at putting in an industrial park there with up to eight different large warehouse buildings that can be used for multiple purposes. So, we'll be putting that meeting together as soon as possible and get the dates, everybody, when we get that.
Thank you.
Okay, this is all from the Neighborhood Watch. With fire season coming up, even with flesses, you want to ask yourself, is my neighborhood safe? You know, I got a lot, well, not a lot, but I got quite a few old people in my neighborhood. One of them, he got a vehicle, he walks his dog, it's about to, if something happened, that guy's stuck. So, it's like, these are kind of ways that we can kind of embody a plan and, you know, get to know our neigh, just your neighborhood. So, if something happens, maybe you need help or maybe you can't help. But it's all about we, and that's kind of what we were just trying to do. So, again, of course, we invite you to come out on the 20th, just see what they're, what Ben's going to be bringing and what's, what's involved. And it's just a good way to, to kind of protect for we. I think if Paradise was here giving us an invite, it'd be like, you know, you guys want to come to this thing. And I'm understanding also that we have people that live in this town now that are from Paradise, and this was another way of us welcoming them here. Welcome home. So, please come. Another thing is, my committee report, I've been waiting for a phone call on the Trail Committee thing. And I have not yet received the phone call.
I just got an email from Julie in the Trail Association, they want us at the meeting, so.
Looking forward to it. About time. Thank you.
Peter?
Well, I served with you now, Mayor, on the disaster planning committee. I had jury duty Monday morning. So, I miss a meeting, but do we have a meeting schedule established with the notion? We can't really move forward with citizen participation until we work out the criteria, advertise, select, what are the criteria?
Julie, I believe you had talked about that we are advertising for the disaster planning advisory committee?
We have not yet.
We have not yet, correct. So, we'll get on advertising it, so we do not have, excuse me. I haven't heard of anyone who has applied or interested in applying, applying yet. So, I think right now the big thing is finding those people to apply so that that committee can have a forum and start having formal live meetings. I know you and I had talked about doing some preliminary stuff, but we did meet with, like, Monty and Chief Padilla to set a couple of things up, and we'll continue to do that. But definitely need to start engaging residents who may want to serve on that committee. And you do not have to be in the city limits to serve on that committee either. So, I think that's kind of where we're at to add that.
For the core group, you, me, and the fire committee, I think we are meeting on a regular basis with the notion February is passing. For the benefit of the public, we did meet with Monty Venter Hall of Pacific Power, and the state public utilities conditions require every major electric utility to fire, file a plan with the state and the PUC. As we get to the fire season in 2019, what are we going to do to decrease the chances of another wildfire? And Pacific Power has put together this presentation that runs, we got it electronically, about 15 pages. But from undergrounding vegetation management to working with the Office of Emergency Services at the state level, county level, I just, on behalf of the community, we need to be regularly until we get the citizens on board. The minutes for the last meeting say the protocol of the committee is going to be in the next one to two weeks, did that happen?
We did discuss upcoming two meetings. There is an item on the agenda that came up, which has kind of taken a little bit more precedence. But we have a draft of a couple of different city protocols and we'll be working on that. But we can discuss what took up our time later on that item, so.
And the Finance Committee, as council member Brian and myself, we have no meeting schedule.
We have no meeting scheduled.
We're dead in the water with any number of funds in deficit.
Well, then, the mid-year budget review was the subject of our last meeting and kind of taking on most of the financial energy of the city at this juncture.
But when are we going to meet?
I think we should meet going forward, probably.
I think there was going to be some work done on the budget committee's purpose and possible resolution.
Yeah, but we can meet concerning that along the next two weeks.
Well, I, I thought the agreement was we were going to replicate the hard work the mayor did on the natural disaster resolution with the notion that budget priorities, policy priorities, and guiding our work to the next 12. and guiding our work to the next twelve months.
Well, that was not decided upon, I believe it's still a question, how to structure it, ad hoc versus standing.
Yeah.
There's things to be said for either, so I wouldn't, I'd be in favor if we wanted to meet on the next two weeks to discuss which would be preferable.
Here again, I don't think we have a climate sphere.
Any other committee reports? Nope, okay, all right, we will now move into announcements on general public comment. This is the time that is open for those in the public to, how to address the council on items that are, that are presentations, items that are on our consent agenda, which, just to remove that with your check register, the second reading of the Canada zoning ordinance, second reading of the Code of Energy for the brewery, and then twenty nineteen City Council meeting days. So, item number eight is public comments related to those things, the mid-year budget review, and then anything else that may be germane to the City Council that is not on the agenda. So you can come up and address, and you'll have a free minute.
Thank you. My name is Paris Petrick, and I'm on Shasta Avenue, and as you all heard about the Dunsmere Potluck, doing this for the camera, it is the town potluck, it's gonna be on two weeks from yesterday, so it's a Wednesday, nine at six o'clock, and we have a lot of donations from local businesses, for local prizes, and some extra food, we have live music, and some canned music, and please, it is so hard to get to every single person, I'm trying to go door to door as much as I can, but I would really appreciate all of you that are here, if you could tell your neighbors and your friends to please come out, because I think absolutely everything is right. Peter, you were talking about pulling people together and having that happen, this is a really good chance to start that. And I understand that the fire season is close, and so I know that this is not, this is not fire, this is crime prevention, but it's all of us coming together, so it's a good first step to knowing who your neighbors are. The other side of it is, I hosted the Paradise people who came, sorry, who've moved here, and their stories are pretty gut-wrenching, but they are extremely beautifully, they're excited to be here, they feel very, very welcomed, and so I would love to have that opportunity to welcome them at this time, at that potluck as well, so that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at the community center on February twentieth, Wednesday, at six P M, thank you, Devin.
Potluck.
And it's a potluck, so please bring a dish to share if you can't, it's not required, but, you know, it's a good chance to do that, so, thank you.
I'm Carol from...
Wait a second, for the train. This is gonna be a little bit loud.
Cedar Street. And, you know, you were talking about the airport development thing, hospital, for as many as eight warehouses and things out there, and there had been some discussion before, you know, ideas that came up before the election and things, and that even came up in public comments here before, of maybe helping with fire reduction by having like a green composting plant, and I wondered if that might consider having that at the airport, might be a really good location for that so that people can bring their debris and all their yard stuff and not pay, you know, three dollars, a five dollar bag to have at the garbage dump or buying extra bags for the city. And that, I understand that McCloud did the green compost plant, and that they are actually selling that compost and making revenue for the city, so I'm...
Good evening, Council, my name is Richard Denjes, I'm with the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanna make a pre-announcement that we're gonna be having a meeting with Caltrans. As you all know, that the freeway on the southbound lanes are gonna be closed, they're gonna be starting in March, and it's gonna go on through October, November, so it is going to affect our town, it's gonna affect all of our events, and what we're trying to do now is work with Caltrans to get these off-ramps open and keep them open during our event, so you're having a meeting on the twenty-first at three o'clock, and it's gonna be at the community center, and we'll be giving out the information at that time. It's gonna be the merchants first, and then it'll be the community after that, so we wanna try to find out what our merchants are gonna need during this event, and, like I said, it'll be at the community center, and it's gonna be on the twenty-first, on the Thursday of February.
What time?
It's gonna be at three o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, my name is Linda Shaven, I live on Massing Drive, and I just wanted to sort of underscore the whole necessity for the disaster planning and offer up my help, you said you didn't know anyone that was interested, but I definitely am interested in applying, so I would be happy to apply and offer my help in any way, I have a background in public health in Shasta County, I worked public health for many years, worked with law enforcement, and we did a lot of disaster planning with those folks down there, and there's just so much that needs to be done.
I encourage you to talk to Julie about application.
I will, and the other thing that I'd like to say is, I think it's a really good idea with the Neighborhood Watch and Disaster to coordinate, we could map our neighborhoods, we can map the people who are disabled and the seniors that can't get out of their homes, we can coordinate with Neighborhood Watch and Disaster Group as well, so...
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, can you guys hear me? My name is Megan McGill, I'm a resident, full-time resident looking north Dunsmere, and homeowner up there, and I would just really like to thank everybody on this council, and Chief Gill, who is not here, for fixing the fire horn in north Dunsmere. Mark, thank you very much for the time, and Julie is amazing, I'm like driving her crazy, like, if you fix this thing, she'll, she'll go away. I went down there today, five to twelve, and waited, and it went off, it was beautiful. Someone called me from the community center yesterday and said, "Oh, they're fixing the fire horn." So I went down and talked to electrician, but I just think it's just really important for the city, and thank you so much for listening to my concern, and I just was, wanted to pass this article around. My mother lives in Sonoma County, and they're installing what are called, I don't know if anybody's heard about these, they're alert wildfire fire cameras, and they wanna install a couple hundred in California, they're installed on like really high peaks, and they can see fire from many, many miles away, I bet anyone was gonna pass this around, if anybody's interested. Hopefully, Siskiyou County is gonna get a few of those, but...
Did you leave this with us?
Yes, yes, you can have, yeah, you can have it, you can call it, or whatever, but anyway, thank you again for fixing the fire horn. Yay!
Hi, I'm Michael Brown, I live on Caldwell, and I'm pretty new to Dunsmere, and I was thinking about, or one of my neighbors said, how about having a flea market here once a month to bring in a little bit of revenue, but also to get the communities together, get Mount Shasta together with the Dunsmere people, I don't know where, I've never done a flea market, but just thought it'd be a fun event to have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have another thing, the great little ambulance that hides behind the sheriff's department, I would love to see it out on the street, it has such character, like we do in Dunsmere. We all have, it's all character here, so I would love to see it out there for about, for people to come, just, you know, when they come, they see it, it's open.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Thad Wallace, just wanted to pay your attention, an issue you have at your Ma Airport. You have three hangars currently that are non-aviation use, hangar C, hangar E, and hangar F. I've been on the waiting list since two thousand, what was it, two thousand seventeen, October seventh, and I'm asked every three months, I have a airplane and I'm trying to get a hangar. So I'm just letting you know, it's a violation of federal grant, and it's, supposedly if I file a FAR Part thirteen, you're gonna have the FAA appear within seven days, so just let me know you're on the lines.
I'm gonna direct you to your City Manager, Mark Brannigan, for that, to talk to him, and then I'll meet up with him and have a discussion.
Yeah, I've come four times to the office next door and let him know, so, thank you, thanks for coming here.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Methany Woods, and I have a question concerning the zoning ordinance that's being read. I know that the second reading is tonight, and my specific question is, is if the second reading passes, when, I heard you guys mentioning during the budget review that you're expecting to begin taking applications in late March, do you have an exact date that you'll open your doors to people to begin submitting applications for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for tonight? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we will now move into agenda item number nine, announcements and reports for council and staff, so I'm gonna hand it over to City Manager Brannigan.
Nothing to report.
Okay, okay.
Nothing to report.
Okay, so just going through some of the public comments, so the Ma, the three hangars, non-aviation, they can bring them to our attention, I will check into that and take a look at what's happening there. To answer the question about the second reading, so how it works is, once an ordinance has gone through its second reading and it's been adopted, it has to go through a thirty-day ratification period in case someone decides to sue us or has any issues with that, and after the thirty days, basically that ordinance would come into effect as far as the date in which we'll start accepting applications, I'm gonna refer that to city staff, and I know that we're working on getting a consultant to do that.
Correct, I just sent out an email just this morning or the afternoon to a consultant that we're looking at contracting with, we have a sample contract in place, looking at fees, so I'm trying to get some clarification on fees, so we're in the process, the intent is to bring a sample consultant contractor services for processing the applications to the City Council at the next council meeting.
Okay.
If, if everything looks fine and the council approves that, then we'd be ready for after the thirty days.
Thank you. All right, seeing none, any other announcements, reports, Councilmember Dodge?
First of all, as far as the green waste, I know that particularly Councilmember Art, who's very interested in that, and I opposed that, we looked at it a couple of years ago, and we brought in somebody from the county that deals with recycling, and they couldn't find a way, couldn't find a way at the time to do it, but there is areas in that property that I think would be available to that, and the development that we're talking about would not infringe upon that, it's in a different area. So as we explore that possibility, I'm open to that, and so I like that suggestion and responsibility. The other thing is, I'd like to almost, I'd like to consider an award for Megan McGill, because I've been having the same desire to have a horn up there, and I think that for perseverance, she deserves some sort of recognition.
Yay!
I'll tell you, I was there for a year and I couldn't get it done, so thank you very much.
Care the hell out of me when it went off, though.
That's all I have.
Thank you, any other Councilmember announcements and other reports? Councilmember Art?
Well, first of all, thank you for the meeting schedule for 2019, I'm gonna be in Portland, Oregon, for our next meeting on the twenty-first, so there's a number of items that I continue to try to get on the City Council agenda, and as I go through them, some I would like to be here for, others I don't care so much. Item one is, I believe we need to close session on Wild versus the City of Dunsmere, and I would ask that that be scheduled on March seventh. Especially with the transition of the City Manager, in the minutes for our last meeting, we were all ambitious and adopted a motion five to zero, where we're going to have a town hall meeting on sewer and solid waste, we're gonna have bill inserts, my idea, we're going to have a website and flyers, that was the mayor's idea, we're gonna have a meeting with large users, that was the mayor's idea. Those need to be scheduled in half of...
Correct, I believe that case is working with city staff to do that.
Yeah, has the city prepared that flyer that we were discussing for this meeting?
No, they, I was off all, was off last week, so, no one did.
I would mention the...
Could we move to the next meeting to have a sample or draft of the letter?
Yep.
The Disaster Planning Advisory Committee, I simply hope to keep the community, we mean as a small group, and we actually solicit, I know there's, I've talked to five citizens who would love to be part of it, but we have to have a process to select them.
Correct, and I believe we do have a process, that's the same as our planning commission as well, and the applications, so I believe we were just going to put out the advertisement to have them do that, so if you, if you know those people, I would advise you to direct them to Julie at City Hall.
The article in yesterday's paper about the community pool closure seems totally wrong to me, and I've had my phone ringing, I've had people talking to me, how can this possibly be? We agreed to tax ourselves for the specific purpose of keeping the pool open, and now we have a meeting on the thirteenth, where Mr. Rodriguez is gonna talk about shutting down for the 2019 season, how can this be happening? So I would hope whether it's at the meeting of the twenty-first or the meeting of March seventh, we could have Mr. Rodriguez, we could have staff, and we could have somebody from our parts of left district with the notion, it's not okay for me, we need to figure out a way to keep the pool open, period.
Yeah, right.
We all got in our agenda package a letter from Jean and Nyla Latuus, they are friends of mine, they're supporters of the three candidates that ran last November, and in their letter, which I hope you all read, they indicate their utter frustration at trying to make the city live better by improving the front area of the California Theater, three separate meetings with the beautification committee that we decided to can, and we are at a loss as to what to do at this point. And so I would hope on the agenda of either the twenty-first or March seventh, there's an action item to give them back their five hundred dollars. I think the city has fielded them, and that it just simply underscores the urgency of not listening to citizens and not taking seriously making our community better.
Here, here. So just to let you know, so I have had a discussion with the City Manager about items on the February twenty-first. Unfortunately, you're not gonna be there, but that's when we set up the goal setting for the city, so that's something that I would advise you, I know you've given me a couple of lists about different goals, so we'll at least have those for that meeting.
Don't wait for me.
So hopefully you can submit those, so we were gonna spend quite a bit of time at the next meeting to set up the goals and priorities, so just to let you know that that's on the docket.
Well, and I would like to have an agenda item, again, planning is going to be a multi-month enterprise. On the other hand, the beautification committee was terminated by this council, and I asked respectfully that on this agenda, we talk about the lack of a code enforcement officer and the lack of any sort of protection for the historic district, and I asked for a joint hearing of the planning commission, the City Council, and the City Planner... the city council, and the city planner, so we can start talking about this issue. And as time goes by, it doesn't get any better.
Correct, yep, that's why we set up the goal setting, because we do have limited resources and staff, so we need to be very smart about what goals we set. So we'll have that discussion at the next meeting. And I would advise you to put your list together. I can combine all of the lists that I have so far, and then take those to the meeting to set those priorities.
Well, I have two specific items. I sent them to the city manager to review. I thought they'd be distributed to the other councilmembers to prepare them, but that didn't happen. But, we need to hire a code enforcement officer.
And we can-
That's not part of the goal setting.
It's part of our resources and everything, but anyway, we'll have that discussion when we get to the goal setting as well, and then we can put on the list of future agenda items to have. But there is no action item tonight. So, is there anything else you have for announcements and reports?
Little things mean a lot. I went on the city website today to see if the website had been updated to indicate that you were mayor and got elected, and councilmember Brian and councilmember Art got elected. And the only thing on the city website is Big Dave and councilmember Deutsch, who's currently mayor, according to our website.
Did you see the city manager writing this email about sending him a bio and a photo?
I, yes, I did.
Okay.
What's the city ministry?
Did you send him one?
I, there, I have multiple files. You know, I mean, how much is on us and how much is on the staff?
Correct, yep. I just know I have not. I've been sick the last week and a half, so that's probably my own knowledge there. So I just wanted to remind you that it's inside.
I have a question. When did we terminate the by beautification meeting?
We didn't. They resolved themselves, dissolved.
Okay, I was just kind of curious. I didn't think we ever did that.
It was being chaired by Jim Holt, and Jim Holt said that there's no purpose of meeting, and we're not meeting anymore.
Well, then, that isn't the council terminating something.
Well, it died of its own death.
Well, that isn't the council terminating something.
So just to bring it back, this is just announcements and reports. If you would like to bring that back as a committee, that should be instituted. We can use that as an item.
No, I want to talk about where we left it two years ago, where Rodden Cloud stood in front of the joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council and said, "This historic district is suffering", and nothing has happened since then, other than the city let go of a code enforcement officer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Finally, I got a knock on my door. I mean, social media, any of you that view social media, that's all fine. But a longtime citizen, who also voted for the three of us, J.J. Tracy, is still very upset about the giant oak tree on Oak Street that was cut down. And he had put together a series of comments written directly from you know, here from Dunsmere Facebook page, including councilmember Deutsch.
Excuse me, I wasn't listening. What was that, you said?
This is about-
I'll pass it down to you. It's about the city's decision to remove the large oak tree on Oak Street.
I want to take that.
So again, this is not an action item?
Right.
So it's just a comment from a councilmember? So if you would like to set it as an action item, or we can take action, we can do that.
No, the comment is, little things mean a lot. We need to do a much better job communicating with our citizens. If we're going to do vegetation management, including removing trees, large and small, here's a citizen that's disgusted with the city and totally frustrated at the job they're doing.
I'm interested in your thoughts on that. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Any other councilmember or staff comments? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda item. Tonight, we do have four items on the consent agenda. Item A is the check register for January 18th, 2018 through February 1st, 2019. Item B, the second reading of the campus zoning ordinance and adoption of said ordinance. Item C is the second reading of the code amendment for the brewery amendments to the zoning code. Item D is the 2019 city council meeting dates. My understanding, councilmember Deutsch, is that you would like to discuss item 10D.
Yeah, I just believe we need to move it off of consent so we can make a simple change to it. So I recommend we move it to business and just quickly discuss that.
Okay, there's a motion to move item 10D off of consent agenda to new business. Is there a second?
Is it possible just to amend this and then go ahead and adopt it? Is this a matter of changing one date from July 4th?
Well, that's the conundrum, I mean, I don't know technically. There's the Thomas rules of way of, I'm not sure what we have to do there. But if we're going to change something, I thought we have to pull it off of consent agenda.
Okay.
You do, and to have a discussion on whether or not to do that in the vote. So there-
You're making a motion to take D and take it to new business?
Okay. Is there, so that was a motion by councilmember Deutsch to second that.
I'll second it.
Any discussion about that? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving item 10D from the consent agenda to item 13C for new business for discussion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Abstentions? That motion passes.
With that being said, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda for both A, B, and C. I second.
Alright, there's been a motion and second for approving items 10A, the check register for January 18th, 2018 through February 1st, 2019. Item B, second reading of campus zoning ordinance. Item C, second reading of code amendment brewery. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing consent agenda items A through C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose? Abstentions? Consent agenda items passed.
Madam Mayor, can we give ourselves a big hand getting to this point?
Thank you. So, so similar, as we said before about second readings, once they're approved, they have a 30-day ratification period, and then they are enacted and can start being called. So, there you go.
Very cool.
Moving on, public hearing. We have no scheduled public hearings tonight. Old business, there is no old business. Moving on to item number 13, new business. We'll start with item A, contract services planner, council, or city manager Brannigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is a contract for the city planner. A few things I want to point out in the contract. One is that this contract is dated for beginning of this fiscal year. The reason for that is to ensure that, assuming we will receive grant funds, FEMA, to put together this plan. And to have that, I want to make sure that the contract can, does show that we are on a contract with Arlene, who has to do the work already and can get reversed. This is a two-year contract, so it would be for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year as well. And I would like to draw your attention to the contract on page two. I'm proposing to amend what I have from the contract under page two, number two, compensation, paragraph B, total price ceiling. Here it says the total price ceiling shall be $15,000. I would like to add per year. Just to make sure, the other caveat here is there's language in here that the funds must be appropriated in each fiscal year. But what we're saying here is that we expect the planners' time for this year and for next year for the normal duties, and to also put together the, have a communication plan to not exceed $15,000 per year. So if you could, is to amend this if approved with the $15,000 per year. And that's it. If there's any questions?
Councilmember Kaiser, I believe you have a question.
It was just answered, because I was looking, I couldn't find any dollar accounts, because I saw the X, X, S, and just kind of I-scanned the next sentence. But there I see it. I was just curious. There was no, you know, I didn't want to sign something, I didn't want to feel this pain, but now, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for city manager Brannigan on this item? Councilmember Art?
Well, I actually read this. And what I'm trying to do is understand the interrelationship between your memo that talks about the local hazard mitigation plan and the actual specification of what we're hiring the city planners to do, which is on page 40 of our agenda, exhibit A. And there I don't see anything about the hazard mitigation plan. So, question one, which I wanted to ask fire chief Medea, never got a chance to, is do we have a FEMA-approved plan for the city of Dunsmere at this point?
We do not.
We do not?
Yep.
And so, I'm all in favor of staff, especially planning staff, but when is this going to get done, the FEMA part?
We're just waiting, the application's been submitted. This is one of the things that they wanted to, for us to get reversed. They required a contract, it's contract services. So we're, we were expecting something this month. We're hoping to get here soon. I believe that the-
This month?
Yeah, I believe the shutdown might have been one of the things that slowed down the response from FEMA. So we should get something back probably this month, if we're going to get the funds or not.
And are we working with the Office of Emergency Services?
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they, I went to the senior executive training committee, and they were sort of like, "Where's Dunsmere?"
Yeah, actually, the reason we got to where we're at today was because of the point meeting that was held about a year and a half ago, where the county OES was there. And we were trying to get onto the county's already plan, but they were too far along, and so we'd have to go our own way. But that the state has revenue available for these types of applications. So they encouraged us to apply. We did make that application, and we're just waiting for the funding.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out and give credit to the fact that this was something that former councilmember Mari Shanta had championed, and that she had worked already with Arlene, just to make this happen. So a lot of work has gone into it, just waiting for that to pay off.
Councilmember Kaiser?
They required us to have this contract before they were going to give us any money. So this was just one, like, the last step. And like he said, if they probably hadn't been for the shutdown, we probably would have already received funds. So this is just like the last nail in the coffin to secure that money.
Well, so the council, the community, you're saying, if we do not have an approved plan, we are not FEMA-eligible.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Actually, so, not FEMA, but we do have a community wildfire protection plan that does allow us OES knowledge and post-recovery.
But not FEMA?
Not FEMA, though.
Correct.
Correct.
Have we verified with Ms. Dinges? She wants to get paid for this?
Yeah.
Verify.
Alright, and then also too, I did see on page 40, it does say hazard mitigation plans and so forth. So I just find that that is in this contract. Alright, and so, going to page 43, talking about the different dates of work, the backlog and everything like that. Can you maybe kind of discuss the column applicant fees paid, and kind of talk about why some of those are no?
Arlene, can you? Let's trade through this.
Sure.
So the reason I'm asking that, just for the general public, is typically when someone files an application with the city, the city is allowed to charge fees to break even on that, so that those fees don't come out with the general tax. So I was just curious why some of those are no.
Thank you. Yes, we have a fee schedule that we take application fees for. It's not a guarantee that you'll break even. And Julie and I just talked today about doing a study to show what the average is and bring maybe some fee schedule revisions to you in the future to consider. When it's marked to no in that column, that means at the time that I invoiced the city for work I'd done, it was pre-application filing, or something that was like over-the-counter, public questions being answered. So it wasn't something that we were, at least at that time, getting money for. On some of those, they did finally develop into an application, and on a later invoice, you would see it changed from no to yes.
Okay, thank you. One of the questions, and I know city manager Brannigan and I had discussed this, could you talk about the city's policy about RMP and bidding, and kind of what we had talked about for this? Typically with consultants, we do go out for bid when we are looking at a new contract. Could you maybe discuss that point?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a series of contracts that the city is having to bring up to current on contract terms. The auditor was one of those. It's something that we've been going more as a lead basis because of resources. But in this particular case, because of the fact that there's already been work that's been done by Arlene, we've already paid Arlene for that work, I feel it's important that we recoup those costs through a two-year contract, which is what we think it'll take for this to be completed. The one year to do the application, hopefully we can proceed to fund and move into getting the document put together. So this is just a two-year contract. I'm proposing not to go out to bid, because it is something that we want to make sure to get our call reversed back.
Okay, and that's for the LHMP funds from FEMA?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions from councilmembers at this point? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. Anyone who would like to come up and make a public comment related to the planner contract, feel free to come up now, we have three minutes. Seeing none, we will close the public comment, and I will open it up for council discussion and a possible motion.
I think we're lucky to have her. You know? And I commend your fortitude. Really, I do.
Any other discussion?
I just had a quick clarification question of whether this word on the plan needs to necessarily be tied, especially on the funding level, tied to planning. So going back to what you did, not, whether there's a reason why this needs to be, I mean, it happens to be our consultant planner. But is there a natural connection here?
These types of, well, by the nature of it being a plan, the best person to work on a plan, in my experience, has been planners. So we have, Arlene is our contract planner, even though she hasn't been on a contract for a while now. So this is going to revue the contract part. And we have full staff members, most of whom which are work utilities oriented, which is nobody else.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a two-year service contract for planning and LHMP services without any digits?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, there's been a motion made by councilmember Deutsch, signed by councilmember Kaiser. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of-
Aye.
You would like to move a call to them?
It's my turn.
Okay. So I will to roll call councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Brannigan.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Art.
Aye.
And then myself, aye. Contract is approved, five to zero. We will now-
Are you sure you want anything?
Thank you, and it is a pleasure working with you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll now move into item 13B, city manager recruitment. City manager Brannigan and I will open it up to you.
This is one of the musicals. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So on Monday, I gave my reservation letter to the mayor, and also to the city council member. And before I get into any details, I do want to thank the city council and the entire members who are no longer seen here today for the opportunity to work with you. It's been an absolute honor. The city of Dunsmere is a place that my wife and I came here to retire and to raise our grandchild. And we just think of the world of the city of Dunsmere. We will be coming back to visit. We have friends here now. We have a lot of places, we love the outdoors and hiking, so we will be back. And just the wonderful places to be here. We're going to be back, and hope it's awesome. We're going to be back, and hope it's awesome. The reason that I've issued my letter of resignation has to do with personal reasons. Without getting into great details, it does have to do with my granddaughter and also with my in-laws back in Lakeport. Also the fires for Carrot Gist, where we lost our renters. And because of a series of circumstances, we tried a lot to try and get a place big enough to accommodate our needs here, and we've been unsuccessful. We just can't continue. We're going to have to move back to work, have our other house. It does sound us. We struggled with this. My wife and I for months. It's not something that, this decision wasn't just made overnight. It's something we worked on and struggled with for a long time. So, with that being said, I did hand out to each one of you a sample brochure that I just did up today, this afternoon. I believe we're looking at doing an ad hoc committee to look at what the city wants to do for recruitment in the replacement of this position. I also received, a gentleman came in today, dropped off a letter. He was a proprietor city manager. He lives in the area. He's offering services as well. I'll get that letter in each one of your boxes for you to see as well. So, there are resources out there. We'll be here until the middle of April. And I'll do my best to focus on these aspects that are needed to be going forward at this time.
Thank you. And City Manager Brian Dinkin and I met on Monday to discuss, you know, certain things that do need to be taken care of in the next ninety days. The Butterfly Bridge is a huge project that we're making sure there's continuity with that. A couple of the other things moving forward with city council, trying to address all of the items that have been requested of us to review. And the best thing that we had discussed is, you know, mulling over the option for city council, just to assign two members right now to make sure that we outline how we're going to go about doing the hiring, and then possibly do the initial application review and the initial interview. Ideally, at the next meeting, we are going to schedule a new business item to formalize this position interest, formalize the salary range, and formalize the timeline and protocols we're going to follow for the process. So, today I was just hoping that two members of the council would step up and help out with that. I also discussed with the City of Marica city manager and the City of Mount Shasta city manager, and they would be willing to assist as well reviewing applications for qualified applicants and doing the first round of interviews. Ultimately, the ad hoc would be recommending at least two to three members from that application process to come to the full council, come to the city, you know. We'll have that a little bit more formalized at the next meeting so that we all know, the general public knows what the processes that we're going to take and what the qualifications we're looking for are. So, that's the general thought process at this point. It was a little sudden and sad to hear, but we're happy that Mark's going to stay with us for the next ninety days to help us find an adequate replacement. So, that's generally what's kind of going on. It was a wonderful Monday after being sick. To come back to you. But we'll open it up for questions right now before we go to the public comment. But Councilmember Deutsch.
Well, I guess this would be more discussion, so I guess we'll have questions. I'll wait until after the public comment.
Okay, are there any questions of myself or City Manager Brian again for right now, as far as procedure, anything else? All right, I'm going to open this item up for public comment. Anyone who would like to come up and time out?
Can we have just a two-second timeout to switch cameras?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, two seconds. Great, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Y'all good?
We're great, thank you.
Wonderful, so we're going to open this up for a public comment. Those who would like to make a public comment on the city manager recruitment, you have three minutes.
Michael Bush, who's the mayor of Butterfly Avenue. Of course, everybody loves Mark, so I don't really have to say that. But just about everybody. And my comment is really simple, because I'm quick, because it started with snow outside. I've gone through so many city managers, you know, the last five or ten years. We have to keep going through this process, the recruitment, the application, you know, all this and that. So, just one comment on that. I really think we should try to get somebody, a high priority qualification should be somebody that is local. I don't mean specifically to Dunsmere, but you know, that knows the area pretty well. Getting somebody from Dunsmere would be great. And there are people who are, you know, I think qualified to be city manager. So, not so much credentials, not so much experience. I think the qualification of being a local person should weigh in pretty high on that. Because we're going through this, you know, so often. It's just, it's so much. So, there's somebody local, I thought that should get some pretty high priority. And that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Harley, Butterfly Avenue. Planning Commissioner, and we've been through this a few times, a new city manager, a lot of times in the last six, seven, eight years. And Mark was really one of the best ones, I think, we've had. I just want to say that.
Yay!
Well, he saved us in the planning commission, too. I'm so glad to have her there.
Thank you.
I mean, we didn't have nobody there to use, so it's great to have with you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none. Oh, you're good.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Butzloff. I'm the interloper from Mount Shasta. And I am the gentleman that Mr. Berdigan referred to. And I didn't know if you'd get the material tonight or not. Apparently it's coming to you thereafter. But of course, I didn't know until I read the Mount Shasta Herald yesterday, late yesterday, that he was leaving and he wouldn't be opening up a recruitment process. And I just wanted to let you know, and when I sent my brief cover letter of introduction, I also attached a sample methodology or schedule for a typical city manager recruitment process that I've been involved in. I've conducted five since I retired from Mount Shasta, including Mount Shasta a couple of years ago. The city of Wade, their current manager Ron Stock, I conducted the city manager recruitment for the city of Iowan in Emmerdale County, and the city of Blue Lake in Humboldt County, some of which these cities also serve as interim manager. And also, most recently, the Bethel Island Municipal Improvement District. And where I served, it turned out to be a four-year interim process because of some things that had, some challenges that they needed to keep me around to help us solve financially and otherwise. And they also were able to replace me with a professional manager who can carry on that effort. I'm not here to promote myself. I'm applying for a job. I'm here because I'm back home again. I'm finding those four years, I've been, these interims, I've had mostly four or five hours away. We, you know, seen my family on weekends and so forth. But it also gave me a rich, as my career did, focusing and specializing in primarily smaller communities like the similar size and character of Dunsmere. And certainly being a, you know, a lifetime since 2002 resident of South County in Mount Shasta. I am continuing to be committed to, as I recommend, your process also, whether it be me or someone else, or however you unfold this as it goes forward. It sounds like you're already thinking pretty well far ahead. To try to impart as much professionalism, and speaking to some of the comments I weren't heard tonight, improve the continuity of the service through the manner in which you determine how to proceed, what you're looking for, how you determine and advertise your position, whether it be local or beyond. And the ultimate profile that you're looking for in terms of personal attributes and professional qualifications. And what you're looking for in a candidate that meets the profile as you define it, this is one of the first processes I go through a city council with.
Jeff, we're over the three minutes, and I appreciate what you're saying. So, I'll let you close up. You have one sentence.
All right, thank you. As a lesson, as you find the best fit for your community for now and for the future.
Thank you.
Would you say your name was, sir? Jeff Butzloff?
Jeff what?
Butzloff, B-U-T-Z-L-A-F-F. I was the city manager of Mount Shasta from 2002 to 2008.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And he did provide City Manager Brian with information as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about the three minutes.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yes, sir, no kidding.
For Tom Harley, Dunsmere Avenue. I just wanted to sing praises to Mark as well, and say thank you for taking on the city of Dunsmere, because that may not have been an easy choice for you in the beginning. And we have a reputation for being rather contentious, I don't know, interesting, and never dull one around here. So, I just wanted to say thank you. And at the rate we go through city managers, we'll see you back in a couple of years. All right, any other public comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment on this item and then open it up for council discussion.
And there.
Councilmember Deutsch.
If I could, I think this is a time to look back just a few years. I've been on the council since 2015, and when I came on the council, we had Randy Johnson, who was interim manager. The last council made a terrible mistake in our first attempt to try to find a city manager. We learned that over a few months, and we rectified that by bringing Randy Johnson back for a period of time. During that period of time, when we went out to search, we formed a committee and had an on-committee. And we had just gotten enough of a reputation such that this time around, we were able to pull in some good candidates. The first time around, we had a reputation that this place was not someplace you wanted to come to be a city manager. There was a reputation that they didn't really want somebody to be qualified to be a city manager. We wanted a manager who they could manage. And so, we have a situation where, after having gone through a process last time, where we were able to come up with good candidates, where we were able to find somebody that I think will stand in our history as a jewel and a special part in our history, I think that the process should be repeated with the same goal in mind, to finding the most qualified person who understands what a city manager job is all about and who has those skills. I would volunteer, having served on the last committee, to serve to kind of give continuity. I know that there should probably, there would be another person on that. But the big thing that I'm looking for here is the idea that we all understand what the city manager job is. And I think that was something that we were able to get across. We had a town hall meeting, which we still have the video of, which I think we can make available to other people. It was a town hall meeting that was moderated by David Klarnow, and we sat here in the room, and we actually went screen by screen over all the different things that a city manager has to do. And I think what's really most important in this particular job in Dunsmere, what the city manager is doing, is recognizing that in comparison to Mount Shasta, we've got two people that are essentially the executive branch, if you will, Julie and Mark. You've got the financial area, you've got all of that. But when it comes down to HR and personnel and all the other different things that are involved in being a city manager, the people need to appreciate that if they're going to be part of the, looking forward to who that person would be. So, I just look forward to finding another person with the same qualities as Mark has and looking forward to helping any way I can.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the item?
What is the item?
The city manager, the process.
Do you want to be on the ad hoc committee?
No, I think it ought to be the mayor and vice mayor with the notion, the voters of Dunsmere put their greatest faith in these two new members of the council. They each have four-year terms. Most particularly, our mayor has a background in planning. I think planning is one of the weakest parts of Dunsmere city government. When I was on the council, we had Alan Harvey as the city manager. And when Alan Harvey announced his departure, he recommended that the city retain an executive recruiter. And the executive recruiter brought to the city sixty candidates, all of whom were enthusiastic about leading Dunsmere. And out of those, the city council picked the best. And sort of looking at Councilmember Brian, we didn't pick the best until we had a totally transparent process where citizens were allowed to meet the three final candidates. The business community was allowed to meet the three final candidates. And it was, with acclamation rather than another revolving door appointee, that we selected Jim Lindley. And we selected him. There's a lot of blowback about, this is a very high-paid position, at least at the salary point that the city has set. And the expectation is that, this is just my own opinion, that the city manager more than earns his or her salary. They have to find grants. They have to find loans. They have to move the city from deficit, deficit, deficit to a better managed city with a bright prospect. So, it is my hope that you and the vice mayor will be the ad hoc committee. I think we have to look besides an executive recruitment at, are we just going out for a city manager? Are we going out for a code enforcement officer? Are we going out for a wastewater three operator? All of these are urgent hires. I refuse to accept the logic that we are a tiny city and will never have adequate staff or funds to have the bright future we all want to see. We need somebody that's going to move us past that. So, it may need that this will take several months. When we did it correctly to get Mr. Lindley, it took about five months. And we had interim city manager in the meantime, because between now and June, there are so many urgent issues that we seem not to be willing to consider, that we need to start considering. So, it would be my strong recommendation that you and Vice Mayor Brian lead this effort with the notion that we are looking for excellence. We are looking for a game changer that will actually merit the salary and the support of the community, including the business community. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is a comment. At the expense of hearing for a long time in the future that these three people were specially selected from on high from the people, I would point out to Mr. Art that two years ago, Mr. Keisler and I were in safe position. And as you said, there's a four-year term. We're admitting a four-year term. So, I just wanted to point that out. That's the way the council works. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, in reference to Councilmember Art's comments, do you want to make a comment, Councilmember Brian?
I'm more than prepared to assist the recruitment effort. That being said, the advantages of the newly-elected council members, I think, could be split with experience. I'm more than willing to accept that. But I also see advantages to Councilmember Deutsch being part of the process. I believe all the council will be extremely involved in this process. Every city council has to be.
They have one point.
It's probably one of the most important things we will do in our tenure here in four years.
They have to pass a big protest.
So, we need to bring the right candidates.
Well, I guess I'm pointing out that if we don't have three pleasing candidates in the final round, we will go back to committee. So, I'm comfortable with anyone being on the committee with the knowledge that we will go through our due process here at the council.
I don't want to do it again. I don't like that.
I don't mind serving, actually, in reference to Councilmember Art's comment. I would be happy to. I'm very familiar, very familiar with the city manager position. I worked for one. So, I don't mind doing that. I've also been on hiring committees before in the past, and I don't mind following the process. In reference, I do agree with a lot of your comments. For me, right now, I think I would like to sit down with Councilmember Deutsch. I think with his experience, we did get hard. And Mark has accomplished a lot of things in two years with everything that's been going on, like I said, with the Butterfly Bridge project. I mean, that's monumental for us to be doing some of these infrastructure improvements. So, there has to be some merit to the previous process. But I do agree, in discussion of the city... But I do agree, in discussion with city manager Brianne, and, you know, the finalists that are proposed to come to us, you know, will leave a day by the community. I think that is extremely important. How that's gonna happen, I'd like to have either, any of the two people who get chosen, I would like that presented at the next meeting so that we can say, yes, these three finalists are going to be expected to do a town hall, or they're gonna be expected to do a presentation, or they're going to be expected to attend the Jefferson Group Fest and see how long they last. I mean, whatever voting process we need to come up with. So it sounds like we're on the same page that we do want to go for and appoint those two members at least to get this started and present a timeline and everything to us at the next meeting along with a review of this or further discussion. And then the working with city manager Brianne to discuss the salary range, making sure that's adequate for the role that this person is going to be playing. It sounds like we're going in that direction. So I would entertain a motion if anyone would like to nominate the two council members. I would be fine serving. Council member Deutsch would be.
Go right with you. We'll nominate the two of you guys to recruit, you know, the committee and find us the right guy.
Okay.
Find maybe Mark.
Or Lee.
Or Marquette.
Or somewhere, or somewhere between.
Marquette, whatever, it doesn't matter.
All right, so there's a motion to appoint council member Deutsch and myself to the ad hoc for city manager recruitment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, the ad hoc is formed. We'll put together a procedure for approval, a formal approval for council at the next meeting with timeline, anticipated actions, and then further discussion on different things related to that so that this process can get moving. And again, thank you, Mark, for your service. We do really appreciate it. You've done extremely well.
I just want to take a moment just to kind of add on to that, this has been emotional. I know for everybody out there, you may have some wonderings about what's going on. I really feel confident that this is something that's very personal and very painful, and so I know that there's a sense that he and Melody are going through grief themselves with this, so keep that in mind as you see them on the street. We have three months to say how much we appreciate them, and we'll take that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to take one more moment because I had an operation on my foot for like two weeks, I've been on the couch, and I want to thank all the people that bring me food. So it's really nice, and I just really, I really appreciate it.
We do have one more new business.
Well, that's right.
Yes. So, before we go into that.
Oh, yeah. Every problem, Matt.
Yes. So we do have one other piece of new business that we moved off of consent, so going to 13th, see the 2019 city council meeting dates. So my understanding for removing this is there was a discussion that one of our meeting dates is July 4th, which, I mean, I guess there's nothing more American than conducting government business.
You gotta support us, that's what I'm saying.
So there is a, there is a discussion that, so that was that discussion. So I will entertain a motion to cancel that regular meeting. I think the discussion, I would like to hear is, would you like to supplement that with a special meeting on the 11th? Or do we want to just cancel that for right now, and if we need a special, we'll schedule it at that time?
I agree with the second point. The other, there is one other tiny little thing too, if you want to get really correct it, that we never did have a meeting on January, whatever it was, I think it was the 7th. But we didn't cancel it, so if we just take that off the list, it was never supposed to have been a meeting.
Okay, yeah, we can do that as well.
So July 4th is now the 11th?
No, I think that's up for discussion.
I think we shouldn't, in the interest of all that needs to be done by the chamber and the city council here, I don't think we should pre-schedule a meeting away.
Okay.
If we can work it into the schedule of the meeting once.
So we're just gonna skip the 4th and here we have the 8th, because two weeks in, again, in August, we have a meeting. So we're just missing the one, one meeting. And with everything we got going on, I don't think that would be too bad.
Was that what you were saying, or were you saying opposite?
The opposite.
Okay.
But it could be worked in maybe on a month where we have three or five Thursday rounds.
Okay, let's see, we'll just get out there. So March has three, if you want to put one on the 28th instead, if you want to go that quickly. Or there's, we could do May as well, we would have a third.
Let's do May.
So you want to do May 30th to supplement July?
Yes.
How's everybody feel about that?
Whatever you want, Madam Mayor.
No objection.
We kicked over top of the 9th, the 24th, I think the 30th of May.
Correct. As regular meetings for the city council.
The only one that we kind of asked was the 4th of July.
And also the 3rd of January.
Oh, yeah, and the 3rd of January.
Talking about stuff that's passed, you know, I mean, we didn't even put out any kind of notice, and we were happy with it, so we did.
You see, I gave them.
Correct. Do you want to check November and December really quick about Thanksgiving?
Oh, we did, we're good.
We're good? Okay. All those in favor of amended or action? Actually, we have to do a public comment first, so I apologize, I'm a little ahead myself. Sorry, we don't do a public comment when it's a discussion. Is there any public comment on meetings? I apologize.
Hello, city council, I'm Devon Warner, I live up on St. Avenue. I've heard from a number of people that it's hard to find city meetings on the city website. I don't know who at the city maintains our website, but it would be really, really nice to have a super prominent calendar that lists every city meeting. So I think it would really help to encourage public participation, which I think is super important, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we will look into making sure that that, if something's prominent, show back. Is there any other public comment related to our regular scheduled meetings for city council meetings? Oh, if you'd like to make that.
Are you guys aware that you can stay home and watch this meeting at home on Channel 15?
It's very good.
It is, it is.
It is now.
It's very good.
Yeah, I just got a phone call, it's like, I can hear you and see you tonight. We're good, good job.
We fixed it.
Yeah.
But as I was just saying, you guys know, if you didn't know, it is on TV.
Thank you. And.
Carol Strum, Cedar Street. I just, I just wanted to say something with all due respect to the council and the previous council and the city manager, that, you know, you know, that there is, you know, there's, you know, people that say, and I kind of, I kind of agree, I guess, I kind of, I kind of agree, that the city manager job in our, in our town, and we, we have our budget problems and stuff here, and the average, the average Dunsmere resident makes about 25% of the salary of the city manager. And I know that we need to recruit a really good city manager, and I think there's some merit to what the gentleman said about maybe trying to hire more locally, if we can find someone.
So really quick, we have a job for that, I know, but at the next meet, at the next meeting, we will talk.
I thought comments were open about this, okay.
Yeah, no, just for the scheduling for the scene, but we will talk about this at the next meeting, and we will have a more in-depth discussion about the salary.
Yeah, yeah.
But thank you, it is an important topic. Are there any other comments related to the 2019 city council meeting dates? Seeing none, we will now move into discussion. The discussion was to add May 30th and remove July 4th and January 3rd. So we had a motion from council member Deutsch, I believe, and seconded by Kaiser, or was that flown?
Right, so we never asked a motion, Mark.
But we never asked a motion, Mark?
You want a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, instead of July 4th, we have May 30th as a supplemental meeting, and.
Remove January 3 to January 3rd.
Retractive.
Retractive.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a first and a second. Is there any discussion on motion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of adding May 30th to the 2019 schedule, approve the 2019 schedule and remove July 4th and January 3rd, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And there, I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, there's been a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Sure.
All right, there's a second. Approved by council member Kaiser, settled by council member Arf. All those in favor of adjourning the regular meeting of February 7, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are adjourned, thank you.
See you guys on the 20th in the neighborhood, watch.